Good evening, I'd like to call the May fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, School Committee Business Meeting to order. Time is five thirty-one. The first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent evaluation, but we're gonna postpone that until the chairman gets here, 'cause he has the evaluation synopsis. So, we can discuss the Mashpee School Committee Member Handbook, and I turn it over to Superintendent DeBoer.
Before we-
Oh, sorry, Don, go ahead.
I did have a question on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Which I probably can't answer, but I will try very hard.
And if the intent is to take a vote in regard to anything under Item B five in executive session, then that would mean that we would need to come back into regular session to ratify that vote?
We can do that on the twenty-second, can't we? No, we can't, 'cause we potentially would have different members.
We should do it. So, I would just note that then, Item two B is incorrect. It really will be, that we will reconvene after the executive session, if that is the case.
You mean on this sheet, not on the agenda?
Yeah.
Assuming we're voting, but it's-
Right, I'm not sure.
We're voting in the executive session?
I don't know if you had a vote to go into executive session?
No, while we're in executive session, are we conducting a vote?
You are. Like, I have a summary of the last one we had, so that's easy to bring back, if you wanna do that in open meeting.
'Cause we haven't voted on that either, right?
Not in this session.
We haven't done the last executive session, we haven't voted, ratified that in open meeting yet, right?
So, you won't use the twenty-second, but that one anymore?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
So, we don't have to come back?
Well, I mean, but, I don't, I-
I guess I'm confused.
It's weird, because if we do that, and again, I don't even wanna talk about this, knock on formalized wood here, but if you have an executive session where X number of school committee members vote on that, and then you go to open meeting on the twenty-second, when there is the potential, there could be a different person sitting in Don's seat.
Sure.
That's five different, or the same or one different person voting on something already voted on by five other members. So, can you ratify that? I don't know. I don't really answer that question.
Well, my thought was, and I'm not sure exactly what the items are that we're handling in executive session, but if there was one item that was germane, that I would think we would wanna see it through to completion.
Well, I mean, I have no problem, and I'll defer to the chairman when he gets here, but I'm sure we can say that we will reconvene if necessary into open session?
Excellent point. Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to point that out.
Do we have to vote on changing this? I think we have to vote on changing the agenda, though, right? Do we have to? No, we don't, 'cause when we adjourn, we're gonna say we will reconvene. Okay.
Yeah.
Talking out loud, awesome. Thanks, Don. You know, my C-daddy always told me, "A day that you learn something is a good day." You know, this has been a good day. All right, so, my C-daddy?
Is that a real thing?
Yeah, it's like your maybe mentor.
Oh.
You probably can't say that anymore, it's gonna get in trouble.
It's just a better text.
Yeah, yeah. 'Cause now they have C-mommies, and it doesn't work out anymore. So, do you wanna take that again, Superintendent DeBoer, the Mashpee School Committee Handbook?
Right, so, since the meeting that we had, we, the last school committee meeting, we did add at the top of page three, now I gave you and wanted to look at, but it's not from the packet, we added sort of a-
Is this the same as what's in the packet or not?
Yes, except we had this intro in a different spot.
Okay.
This is moved to here.
All right.
So, we've added that as an introduction, and so whether that meets with your approval?
So, can we vote on this and approve it tonight with minor edits?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have some minor edits, too, and one of them was after rereading this paragraph. The one thing of that, it's kind of a double-edged sword that we have the scope, because we lessen the strength of this document by putting the scope in there. So, I don't know if we wanna add something in the first sentence that still, it basically lets new committee members know that, even though this is informational, there are norms in here that, you know, kind of, that we expect school committee members to follow, if that makes any sense. Maybe I'm being too harsh, but it'd be nice to know that, you know, if you violate something in here, it's not just informational, but it's the expectation. Maybe I'm putting too much in that paragraph. I defer to the group.
So, what if you did something like, "In the second sentence, all members are expected to be familiar with the policies contained in the Mashpee Public Schools Policy Manual and to meet the expectations..."
Describe or delineate it, or something like that. What do you think, Don?
Well, see, this is, this one's tricky, because the committee doesn't have a lot of power over the individual committee members, other than the power to make majority decisions. But, I could ignore everything in here, and there's nothing that would happen.
At your peril, Don.
Well, I'm using that as a-
Well, I mean, you could, I mean, it depends on-
I'm just pointing that out.
I agree with you, and we have a very cordial committee, but that doesn't mean to say that, you know, you have an alpha member of the committee that publicly rebukes someone that's on the committee, 'cause they're not following the norms that we've laid out. I mean, that's about as hard as you can get, but believe me, if you do that sixteen times, it's gonna be a rough reelection.
Well, that's true. And that's, that's exactly right. That's their peril.
Yeah, exactly.
But they could-
Oh, absolutely, I mean, you know, you can't-
They can do that.
No one has to follow process.
Right.
You know? You just have, that's why you can't process stupid.
I don't know, I mean, I don't, I think Don's right, though. We can't really, honestly, this is just meant to be an aid to someone coming into this position who's not served on the committee before, to make sure that they don't step in it inadvertently, because they're not, they didn't know where to find all this information and the various locations that it exists now. So, I think it's, it's really meant to be, and we're offering this to new school committee members as a way to orient themselves to the norms and policies of the committee. And I think maybe it should just say that, rather than, 'cause we don't really have, there is no teeth to it. Nothing happens to you.
I know, but there's, you know, we have sentences in here, like, "You will do this," and you are expected to do that.
Oh, yeah.
And you will be cognizant of, you know, so-
Yeah, you are expected to.
It's a very forceful document.
Yeah.
Well, it's forceful choice of words, but-
Yeah, there's not a-
Exactly, it's a teethless forceful document, yeah, I get you, yeah.
There's nothing behind-
Okay, well, then, you know, I withdraw the comment. I mean, it's, I'm with you. I got you. I mean, it is what it is, and people are gonna follow, they're not gonna follow it, and we know that the intention is-
Yeah.
That we're trying to make somebody from getting on the board and not having any idea what they, what their expectations are.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we say this guidebook is offered as an orientation.
Well, I mean, I think that's what it is, is an orientation.
An informational overview, or, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, then I withdraw my comment, yeah, I'm cool.
I have, so, given what we discussed in the outreach commit, the outreach-
I'm gonna pass it over to the chairman, but can we go page by page, so all of our comments can get tracked, so? Any issues with the table of contents? No? And then we move to the, what we just talked about, to the next page, it's got the intro and the new scope. Page four.
I'm going over the handbook.
Yes, sir, we just skipped, 'cause I know you had this, we don't, I don't have access to evaluations, so I'm gonna talk about it, so.
Yeah.
Which we should probably-
Yes, we will.
Talk about.
Yes, we will.
Page six?
Well, on page five, just under Chair, the version we looked at before, we took out, contrary to Robert's Rules of Orders, under which the committee normally operates, used to be in the second sentence, we just started with the Chair will not, but we also added two bullets that matched, all of this matches up with our policy. And the bullet that was added under Chair is the last one, seek legal counsel advice upon requests of school committee, and the other one added under, the last one was, let's see, it was put in under enforce, it was recognize persons who desire to speak and protect the speaker who knows the fourth and disturbance or injury.
Sweet. And I apologize, I, because I'm looking at the old one, which I made my notes on, and the new one, I did have something on page four, if I can go back to that previous page.
Sure.
So, I was cur, had any problem, anybody asked us about taking office each member will be given access to, and I believe we should add Robert's Rules of Orders on there? They should be getting a copy of that document.
Where is that?
Isn't it on page four? Oh, the page numbers are different, too?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
What is it, the bottom of page four?
Is it?
It's at the end of the bullets.
Oh, yeah, it is, okay. Oh, it's on the top now of-
Page five.
Top of page five. Oh, you changed the bullets?
We changed the bullet?
No, no, it's my fault, it is, it swapped over to the next page. So, I was curious, I think we should add Robert Rules of Orders, and I don't know if we need to have, they will also be given access to the MASK website and the resource tab, if we wanna put that, I don't know if that's in the last page, the MASK, 'cause I know that, I found that very informative when my first couple of months is going to that-
So, we have ASC, resource tab.
The resource tab, I don't know if we had that one here.
You should also include the DESI website there, for them, too.
Well, we have that useful resource, and we don't have to give them access to that, correct? They don't have, committee members don't have special access to that?
No.
But the resource tab, you have to be a MASK member to get to that, so, and get a username and password. So, who's responsible for that, Patty?
Getting the number?
Getting the, get the new member registered up with MASK and get them-
I think Gail did that.
Okay.
I remember that. If you've all got yourself registered, I bet she did.
I was curious.
You did, and Gail did.
I did do an email, I just got, I got an email with my username and password.
Yeah, I'm sure Gail did that.
Okay, thank you, that was my thing for four.
So, on here, though, one thing that's important-
Where you at, Mr. Don?
In the new member orientation, I guess it's either somewhere here in four, end of four, or in five, one of the important things is, everyone will be assigned a school email account to use for conducting-
Oh, addition here?
Communication and receiving communications as a school committee member.
Do we have a section in here discussing the use of the email account?
I don't remember communication.
I can't remember if there's anything specific talking about, it's supposed to be used for professional use only, and I don't remember reading it.
Do we talk about-
Does that fall under the acceptable use, but do you have to follow these typical use policies that we all have to follow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think it falls under that, and that's in there.
In here?
No, it's in the policy manual.
It's in the policy manual.
Acceptable use of, the outline, the uses of schools.
Yeah. I mean, I think it would move us to have a section here to, people be careful how they use their school committee emails. We have been bitten by that.
Well, there should be something in here to point out to the new members in regard to public records.
Yeah, it seems like we can add a sentence to under communication, 'cause we actually even talk about, on page sixteen, we even talk about two-way communication, and any communication warranting a response, I don't know. Seems like maybe we should have it.
So, something about the use of this email?
You should probably put that in that, any, you know, school, in the email correspondence as public record and, you know, those kind of important things that people probably should know.
Maybe refer it to open meeting law?
Yeah, don't call, you know, call it Nicole, 'cause she will find out at some point.
Right, that, everything is retained, and is subject to the-
Open meeting law and Freedom of Information Act, yeah.
Well, the public records, that's, so, everything you put on there is a public record.
Did they go over that in your orientation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they won't have the orientation till later.
I should probably stop sending you those recipes, then, or start.
Yeah, please don't.
I'm just curious if they have things that we-
Or at least include all of us.
Oh, I can just file a FOIA request to get all your recipes.
Yeah, exactly, that's true.
But it's a secret family recipe.
Okay.
They just need to, you know, a member should know.
Under professional development, which is Rule six, unless it shifted around, let's see, that's page six, from the previous version that we looked at at the last school committee, where it says, registration fees for conferences and workshops approved by the district, members will be reimbursed for reasonable costs incurred, we took out, all of that was that, it has passed, provided that they follow the same clauses established by the district employees to obtain reimbursement of funds of the budgeted, and that we took out any event where the cost per member is expected to be greater than a thousand must be approved by school committee. And, I think we talked about the last sentence about any event.
They look the same, we're looking at the same version.
You're not looking at the one from last week?
No, but I'm just saying that, yeah, the one that's in the packet doesn't have that, yeah.
Yeah, no, the only, the only one that was, we can just go with the packet, that's what we're doing.
Oh.
We didn't, other than moving the intro and maybe all of school committees, not generic, not specifically Mashpee, we're non-competitive.
Oh, okay.
Okay, cool.
Did you take out the wording that the school committee had, needed to approve?
We did.
Why?
Any event where the cost per member is expected to be greater than a thousand must be approved by school committee.
Right.
That's not written anywhere in any reimbursement piece.
Again, that's a double-edged sword thing, again, we can't put policy in here if it's informational, if it's not in our policy.
We can have that, we can make that policy, but it's not current policy.
Well, the current, so if we follow policy, policy would require any expenditure to be approved, correct? If we're defaulting to the, to the regular policy?
I don't think it says that, but I can't remember, and I am losing my mind.
She's gonna look at it.
Because people can't do-
Yes, employees cannot go on anything that's not pre-approved.
Right.
Yeah.
So-
Well, we approve, I mean, maybe not the exact dollar amount, but we approve all travel and all professional development for us anyway.
I have to, I mean, I don't remember the policy.
So, in the policy, it still says that?
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, but-
Okay. I mean, if it's just taking the thousand dollars, I'm fine.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Yeah, what's it say?
Fun? Holy cow, it's like Greek.
Literally, the one section we need.
You know what, then, yes, go to our version, what is it, B I B A?
The I B A.
Go in the other one, it did that to me, too.
Oh, I'm G.
It's operational, board governments, right?
B I B A.
I'm at the BD.
B I B A.
Oh, I got it. No, it's still B.
Oh, so go out of the searchable one and go in the ones we posted.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Goodness.
'Cause if I was a new school committee member, reading this literally, it would indicate I don't need school committee approval.
Well, again, again, this is not our policy manual, this is an orientation-
No, I know.
The school committee shall be made aware of school committee conferences, conventions, and workshops, the committee will periodically decide which meetings appear to be most promising in terms of producing direct and indirect benefits of the school system. Funds for participation at such meetings will be budgeted on an annual basis, when funds are limited, the committee will designate which of its members would be the most appropriate to participate. Reimbursement to committee members for their travel expense will be in accordance with the travel reimbursement policy. When a conference, convention, or workshop is not attended by the full committee, those who do participate will be requested to share information.
Yeah. So, it doesn't require preapproval?
But the thing is, I mean, you know, and again, maybe we should put that in there somewhere, but by, you know, by, just by our definition, we cannot expend funds individually.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, I, you know, I, I'm with you, I, we should probably put that in there somewhere, but there's an expectation that you attend conferences with, you know, people think we need that, probably, as a new person?
You're the newest, so what would you have thought?
Registration fees for conferences and workshops will be paid by the district, subject to approval, I don't know. If that's what, I can't imagine why anyone would go to a conference that, yeah, preapproval or something.
Well, because I have, because I have looked up things, like, MASK has some, like, offshoot, I think that they, one year they had a, was it called the Education Institute or something, they had like a little mini conference thing, it wasn't well-publicized, I just happened to look it up, and I was looking at it, and I said, "What a great thing to attend, it wasn't, it wasn't super local, but it wasn't expensive." I brought it to the committee to see what everybody thought about it, and I was gonna go, but I could've just signed up for that and went, you know, but I, but I wouldn't, I'm not saying everybody would do that, I don't know if, what do we think, if it's important to make sure a new member knows, that if you wanna go someplace, please let the other four members know, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we can just say that.
I don't know, I mean, some, you know, something to lines up, you know, in this thing about, some, some line that any conference, any conference and workshop that a member would like to attend should be discussed at, you know, at full committee or open meeting or something like that, you know? Yes, ma'am?
There's another policy, B I D.
No.
B I D.
That says, the school committee shall serve up compensation upon submitting vouchers and supporting bills for expenses incurred in carrying out specific services previously authorized by the committee. Members may be reimbursed for school funds.
Oh, yes.
Reimbursable expenses may include the cost of attendance at conferences of school committee associations and other professional meetings, or invitations from such attendance and expense scheme that has had prior school committee approved.
Okay, so we do need to have something in there.
So, you don't need permission to go, you don't need permission to go, but you need permission to get money back.
To get reimbursement, going.
Yeah, so it's in your best interest to talk to somebody. All right, cool.
So, I just think we need to make them aware of that, 'cause otherwise, you know, someone will get very upset.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Those pages?
I believe so.
The question we had was on-
I meant page ten. So, one of the things that we were discussing, and one of our tangents at the outreach meeting was our liaisons and groups, and I know this is a working document, and so we probably don't have to worry about it right now, but we thought it was, well, at least two of us thought it was prudent that we have a discussion about all the liaisons and groups we have, and determine if we actually are supposed to be proactive, push liaisons, or if we're liaisons that are documented so that people can come to us if they have information from an outside.
I got what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, in here, I think it's fine, and, you know, we talked about, do we need to have all these subcommittees, the standing committees, subcommittees? I know, I know four of them are designated by policy, you know, so, anyway, that was my, I just made an asterisk of that, so it could talk.
Yeah, and then, I do think that anything that is a formal, like, I, my point in that conversation was that we, you know, the designated of the CAIP-COD Collaborative is a board member for the collaborative, so it's not really a liaison.
CIP member is a board member.
Yeah.
Planning, construction is a board member.
So, I felt like, when I flipped a page, we called out health advisory and CIP and, you know, so, I just thought, whatever those, like, the collaborative should be called out, because it's a formal-
And the thing about it, too, is that if you, you know, look at, I don't know about the collaborative, and I don't know about health advisory, but I know for planning and construction, for example, we, we as a committee do not have to be the board member on that committee. We can designate someone else. So, I don't know if that's also available for collaborative and stuff like that, 'cause we do know that our, with our new working groups and some of the stuff we've been doing, it's been stretched a little thin, so. The collaborative, I think, is not, that's not, I think that's a school committee member as part of the collaborative, but I don't know if, like, we could designate somebody to be on the health advisory committee, as opposed to one of the committee members going. I don't know who we could designate.
I personally think this lends itself to a nice chart. You know, we're like, one column is like formal board member, or another chart is like point of contact, and another one is like actively attends meetings or some, you know, I'm not saying we need to do that to pass this, but it just seems like, if I were a new member, I just wanna see, like, the list, there's a lot of paragraph here, when we're really just talking about different, you know?
Well, it would be helpful, I think, to kinda expand on that, to have a chart that tells what is it that they do on each of these, 'cause some are much more proactive than others. Health advisory, at least it's always been my understanding that the liaison from the school committee is the one who is actually running those meetings and taking the minutes for those, for those meetings. So, not quite as strenuous as the collaborative, but equally, I think, important.
Yeah, okay.
But is that, is that happened just because somebody was proactive ten years ago, or because that's what the, you know, the bylaws of the Charter of the Health Advisory Committee states then?
I don't know if there is a by-
Let me put that in the wellness policy and affect in schools, remember? Back in the day.
And I didn't wanna, my comment was to waste a lot of time, I just think we really need to, that's something we should probably, at some point, if we-
And, and can we spell out what CPAC stands for?
Oh, yeah, 'cause people won't just-
I just remember when you guys talked about CPAC when I first came on, I was-
Yep, that's a good point.
Super good point.
I mean, maybe we just have an appendix that's a chart that says C, this for, so it doesn't have, hold up.
But kinda a little blurb about each of the committees, and, you know, is it, to your point, is it a push or a pull type of?
Yeah, and we talked about, like, maybe we could shorten the list, but it's mostly based on the fact that there's not really any active engagement going on right now, and we wouldn't want people to think, "Oh, you're yanking a school committee member from this group for any particular reason," but it's just, it seems like it exists in name, but not really anything else, you know?
Well, which one are you talking with?
Well, I don't dare say.
No, we, that's the whole purpose of it, we didn't wanna bring it up to ones we thought we could take away.
Yeah.
Something-
I mean-
I don't know the history behind why there are these and not others, or, you know?
I mean, my guess is this was the group that the school committee interacted with, I mean, it's- 'cause we, we added two here recent, in recent history, that didn't used to be here, to the list that I'm looking at. I just think it would be helpful to provide a new person with an explanation of what those groups do and what the expectation is.
Like, one of the newer ones, which I think might've been, you know, an area of interest for a member, but, yeah, two other people go to those, you know, part of that process, too.
Yeah.
So, when that person isn't doing this anymore, is someone gonna wanna do it, you know?
Yeah.
And you can do it.
But my ask was, was just to request we discuss this in the future.
Oh, so we don't have to do it now?
No, that's a good point.
Yeah, 'cause it needs, it needs some love, and it's more love than we can do in there. Twenty minutes of love, I'm making.
Yeah, we're discussing the book, itself, not necessarily the position.
I don't think I have any more comments.
I think I had, then, back to going to page-
Twelve.
Twelve. So instead of, at the previous meeting, we had that section at the bottom labeled reorganization, but the policy just refers to organization. So I made it match and took out anything, because the way it flows now, it just stays with the chair or the, the next senior member. Like, if you two were up for reelection and we didn't make it or whatever, whoever was then the secretary would then run, it goes like that, to do the first voting on the organization. It doesn't go to me.
Right.
But we had it that way.
Oh.
I fixed it. So now flows through, and then I also renamed the ballot. We had it as nomination ballot, which does get a little complicated with policy, so we renamed it to, um, organization position interest chart. Because all you're doing is indicating your interest in a position. It's not a ballot, it's not. It's an organizational tool.
Yep.
And everything else flowed with that and changing anything that was superintendent to current chair. Like, a number nine, one each candidate has had a chance to speak, but this is when you're going for the chair. The current chair will then ask the committee to roll call vote to elect a new chair by each member naming and then, then all those steps get repeated by whoever is the one with chair position.
One, the one thing, Patty, that I thought about, um, do we need, let me just double check here. So if a person, um, by chance didn't initially indicate on the organization position interest chart.
OPI.
OPI, OB?
OPEC.
OPEC. And, and initially get, um, put into consideration by, because the whole interest chart is accepted? A person could still be nominated at that meeting?
It's, it's exactly what I was gonna ask about and what would I, I guess would have to happen. And the way you have it set up now, um, is that the person that would like to nominate themselves for, for something that they did not put on the chart would not vote yes on unanimous consent for the form?
No, what I think would happen is, and I think this is what happened at the last or, organization meeting.
We just had some, we did nominations and stuff.
That we had an individual express separately an interest. There was no one else that was interested, so then there was a nomination and a second of that individual who expressed an interest?
Yeah, and it's very similar to the question I had too. And I, I don't want to beat this up, but it's a different way that we've done business and there's probably a lot of questions that we may find answers when we do it. But if we don't get unanimous consent for the nomination ballot, we'd have to probably go back to the original way of doing business, correct?
No, it's just, it's not a nomination.
It's basically just a way to be a little more efficient with, here's everybody's interest in whatever.
It sounds efficient.
Yeah, I, I think it is efficient. I'm just curious if we, if we, if we are designated, that we need to get unanimous consent for the organizational position, position, interest chart?
So it'd be unanimous being that you're accepting this, that you're gonna reference this document. It doesn't say that you can't edit that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out the nuances about that.
Yeah, it's a way I.
Because we're not, technically, we're not doing a roll call vote on it, right? We're just asking for it be accepted by unanimous consent by the committee members.
Yeah, there's no roll call vote on it or anything.
Does anybody have any comments about the chart or something like that?
Yeah, it's kind of saying, hey, is everybody okay with this?
Right? But that'll, the, the thought behind it was eliminating potential issues of having multiple people interested in the same position and, um, there being a mechanism for them to be able to express that interest or individual interest in any particular, without self-nominating, so that everyone can be given equal consideration and then it's up to the committee to decide, um, through, um, a roll call vote, whether or not.
I think that's great, I'm just trying to understand the process.
I would think in a perfect world, when we're talking about the unanimous acceptance of it, if somebody decided that minute, hey, I'm actually interested in this. Especially once you, you look at it, because we're all doing it individually. So like, when I'm filling it out, I have no idea who else is interested in.
Oh, exactly.
In all the other positions, but then when I see it, I might say, oh, well, nobody was interested in this. So now I, I want to make sure that I express my interest.
Right, and you have that opportunity.
It's got to be really collaborative and open.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah, cool, that's cool.
Or I see Dawn is interested in something and I want to try to block them. So then I say, well, I want to.
Again?
I'm now interested, I'm now interested, exactly.
Very good.
Hey, cool.
Um, on page 14, that where we are now, the next page? I just find this, well, as an editor, I'm sort of like puzzled by the, the overall organization. Some things have colons, some things are standalone, some things are underlined, some things are not. So I don't know if that means anything, but it's, it's a little confusing to me just as I read it. But in particular, this level three grievance, just, I, I just think it warrants some sort of introduction because as a new school committee member, if you've never been involved with unions before, which I would say not everybody has, I don't, it doesn't even say, the school committee hears grievances to assist in resolution about, like, there's just, it's missing like a context for that. Because my first thing is like, well, what's a level two grievance and what's a level one grievance? And why is there, so we added this section about grievances to, to, I think, I think, Dawn, you had suggested adding this, but, which is fine, but there's just nothing that explains why we care about grievances.
Well, what they're, why they're occurring.
Yeah, or what, yeah. A grievance is, um, I, I mean, it, it, we do have that, but it doesn't say like why it's coming to us or, anyway, that's, that's all.
Good editorial comment, I was, I had that at the end.
Like, the next one has a hyphen. I don't hope that means anything, that there's a hyphen, a colon, an underline and.
Well, so.
Makes me want to go back to the table of conscience.
I'm meeting an executive.
Oh, I see, level three grievances comes under executive session.
Yeah, because they're only, we're only here to have that experience and that kind of.
So that's what we should say. You know, you could put that in the introduction too, yeah. I see, there, so the ones with the colons are subbullets.
Do we need to include in here the fact that? Just a second. We really don't talk about how those meetings occur?
What, executive sessions?
No, the grievance sessions. How that process works. I don't know if we have that somewhere else or do we need to have it here? Or is it, we have that information somewhere else?
We don't have it in this document anywhere else. I don't know that it is written anywhere else.
It's in the contract, that's about it, right?
Right, but that's, this is from the contract.
Does it talk about the procedure? Okay. I mean, I think that would be helpful for someone who wasn't familiar with grievance hearings and how that.
What is the procedure, because are you talking about how it even gets to level three? Or do you mean the entire procedure of what we deal with?
What happens during that particular executive session? Because it's different from any of our other meetings, that they would be, that a school committee member would be involved in.
Oh, yeah, because they got the, they come and.
Because it's, they come, they present, you know, um, you know, there's discussion.
Do you think that would be, this is just me thinking, do you think that would be too much detail for this type of document?
Well, not if you're gonna put this in here. I mean, you know, I think it's just adding a, because honestly, when we did that the first time, I mean, I'm just finding out what I'm doing when I come to this table.
Right.
You know, or, I mean, you guys may have told me something a few minutes before, but I'm just saying it, you know.
If you didn't know in advance.
Yeah, it wouldn't have been anything that I.
No, I understand that it's good information to have. I'm just asking the question if we, like, at what point do we say we're putting too much detail in it? And we gotta at least rely more on interpersonal communication with the committee? I mean, I don't know, I'm just.
Because there, we have in here that this person will be designated a mentor. So that mentor should be sitting down with that individual before their first executive, before their level three grievance and saying, hey, this is what's gonna happen, is what you could expect. Because it may be different, a little bit different each time too and some nuance, but I, I don't know. I know we definitely should have like number 11 under executive session saying to address a level three grievance. Or to address any grievance, I guess.
Yeah, but those are, those 10 things, those are prescribed.
Yeah, that's the only reason that you can.
They don't have that, it probably has to do with some.
This is an informational document in which we can change at our will. That's the whole purpose of this code. Oh, I know, but Dawn specifically said that it doesn't say anywhere that we're gonna be in executive session for a level three grievance. I know that it's under executive session, but the edit, the editing of the document doesn't really let me know that that means that it's an executive session, so. I'm with you, I know what you're talking about with executive session. Or if you want, you can put level three grievances will be conducted in executive session. I mean, it's whatever you're most comfortable with. I'm good with either one. I guess it doesn't, I mean, I guess it's impossible to think of all the permutations of a, of level three grievance, but if it's not personnel or medical or basic, it doesn't necessarily have to be in executive session.
That's true. We've had some in open.
Yeah. Like with the one about, oh, whatever.
Just in case, no.
Yeah, 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 I don't know. Jet sessions of.
To, to Nicole's point, this is a live working document, doesn't have to be perfect. I think every.
Yeah, but I think we should get it as close to what we want, the initial one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
It's no rush either.
No, that, that's true. I just think, a, a, as we think about some of these things that, it would have been nice if someone would have told me.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
How that whole process would have worked, because I think everyone at this table, their first experience with a grievance hearing was their first time that they were exposed to that. And knowing how that whole process is supposed, it works and what their role is, I think would be helpful for the, for a new committee member or even old committee members. Am I the senior commit, am I the senior committee member?
You absolutely are.
You are.
And as we pointed out.
Which is why you're at the end of the table.
I was gonna say, year served or by age? Because I think he's got both.
Dawn's got both, yeah.
I'm not the senior member at this table though.
I would say longest serving instead of oldest, right?
You make that sound like a crime, longest serving.
No, Dawn's got me by about a year, I think.
What's that? On the school committee?
Oh, you got me by a year, by five.
Yeah.
You have six, right?
Yeah. Time, time flies, anyway.
Just realizing you're behind, we are already.
Oh, yeah, shoot.
All right, so any other edits that we can provide this?
And we are, did you already capture the ones that we talked about already for communication section on page 15?
Just about making sure that the members understand email correspondence and the record or something.
Public record, professional lens, ethics.
And that you have to use your school, don't we have to use our school email to do school business?
You should, yes.
You should. And it's for school business only?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's really three things.
So there are no more comments on it, it is on the agenda to vote, so we can either vote as a first read or we can vote to approve however the committee would like. So if somebody wants to make a motion for.
I move to approve the Mashpee School Committee Member Handbook, May 15, 2019, with edits.
A second.
Posted by Jeff and second by Nicole. Any other discussion? All right, Dawn?
Yes.
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 Yes. Now we'll double back to the superintendent evaluation. And again, I apologize for being late. Traffic was, on 1:30 was like Fourth of July traffic. It was great.
Yeah, there was something, there was something, something weird was going on. That stoplights were.
And then on top of that, which we can talk about is Teach Point is awful.
Worked really well for me.
Yeah, I sent, I sent an email saying very simple things.
Awful. We're trying to combine all this and get that all going.
Yeah, Suzie could have thought of how to combine them.
Maybe next year just do it.
Yeah, so there was, uh, reasons why I couldn't get to it right away. So I'm gonna actually have to fill in some missing information.
I wasn't, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I don't want you to get suffering with it if you don't have to.
And, and that as well, I'm gonna actually reach out for, for help, because it's pretty bad. But yes, so we will get the combined copy out and that way it can be published around, you know, this week. And I'll get with her on that. So, all right, we'll get started with this. Uh, the superintendent summative, summative evaluation is comprised of four standards. Uh, I'll just go by each standard, I'll list the standard and I will give the, uh, the score based on an average of the members' ratings on each one. I'm not gonna read all the fine details of each and every item, but if, at any time, if Mr. Bor has a question or if anybody else on the committee has a question, please stop me and, and ask. And then at the end of that, I'll read all comments for each section. Uh, so the first standard is instructional leadership. Uh, we have standards-based unit design and it was a rating of three cumulative between the committee members. Next is lesson development support.
And that's, three is proficient?
Yes.
Oh, three is proficient, yes, actually, let me go to that real quick. Uh, thank you. Uh, one would be an unsatisfactory rating, two is needs improvement, three is proficient and four is exemplary. So next, under lessons, lesson development support, it was a cumulative rating of three, well proficient. Instructional practices was also a three, proficient. Quality of effort of work. Was a three point, three point five. Diverse learners' needs. We have a three, proficient. Variety of assessments was also a three, proficient. Adjustment to practice is also a three. Under educated goals, we have a three as well, proficient. Observation and feedback. Observation and feedback was a three point five. Ratings. Three point two. Alignment review is also a three, which is proficient. Knowledge and use of data is a. Knowledge and use of data is a, I was rounding up, so it comes up to a three point five. That does sound right, Don, I'm using your document, and I'm trying to fill in the-
Yeah.
Missing data. Alright, so school district, uh, school and district goals. Um, on that one, we have a, which would be a three point seven five, correct? Improvement in performance, effectiveness, and learning is a three, proficient. So the overall rating for instructional leadership, which is section one, is a three, proficient. So the comments under that, we had a few comments, uh, under A one, which was, uh, A one, which was, uh, base unit design. Would like to see more, like to see more formalized and strategic plan in place for current and new curriculum implementation. Curriculum is not a priority on school committee agendas and should have a periodic set timeframe at both the subcommittee and full committee level. Yes, I'm gonna, in the, in the, in the combined one, I'm gonna put all this stuff in there, but yeah. And then another comment is, I appreciate the push for dedicated PD time and the numerous guest speakers, including in the annual meeting plan. Interested to see if point one could drive more focused schedule defined by the curriculum roadmap and previously defined strategic plan. E one had a comment, which is instructional practices, continued turnover of school leadership, particularly at KCC, is preventing, preventing this from being in exemplary practice. And D one, uh, which is educator goals, I would like to have more information on the topic from the school administrators. It'd be nice to see the nesting of teachers to principal, to district goals, and how they are moving the needle. Good periodic agenda topic. E three had a comment as well, rating, I have no way to assess this metric, my only gauge would be based on compliment, uh, complaints from educators and a single escalation of a grievance to a school committee. If those are my action steps, I would not consider this a proficient area. We need to find a way to incorporate this into the agenda or as a shared topic.
Which was that, D?
Uh, that was D three, ratings. E one, there was a comment, knowledge and use of data, I'm supportive and appreciative, and appreciate any data we can utilize outside of the annual change, changing standardized testing. And that's it for those, and we had one comment at the end of the entire section. Patty demonstrates an exemplary work ethic and models the high, the high expectations that she has for the district. She engages personally with students, teachers, and administrators to monitor progress and empower staff to perform high-quality work. Importantly, I would like to call out her exemplary work on school and district goals. Through our portrait of a graduate project, Patty led a large group of stakeholders through a comprehensive discussion and collaborative process to support a result-oriented strategic plan. I was very impressed with her willingness to consider new standards and assessment techniques and enable a frank discussion on which it means to graduate in today's world. She is consistently looking up and forward, focused on increasing student achievement and empowering her staff to innovate and acknowledging them and our MSPS students, our MPS students, for their success along the way. Any questions or comments on first standard? Alright, we'll move to standard two. Okay, standard two is management and operations. First item is plans, procedures, and routines, uh, that received a three point two five. Operational systems. Uh, that was a three, proficient. Student safety, health, and social emotional needs, also received a three, proficient. Recruitment and hiring strategies. E one, that received a, this would be a two point eight, I think that would work out for me. Sorry if my math's a little off on these, it'll be correct on the final one, but like I said, I'm trying to add some data in. Induction, professional development, and career growth strategies. E two, that is a three point two five, proficient. Time for teaching and learning, C one. That is a three point two five. Laws and policies, that is also a three point two five. Ethical behavior, three point five. I apologize, that would be a three point seven five. Fiscal system is a three point seven five as well. And for the overall rating of management and operations is a three, proficient. Alright, and there are some comments under this section as well. So for A one, um, I would like to see and have discussion on how to ensure the students are getting adequate time to eat during their meal times. I'm also concerned that we have invested so much time in the technology for our district, yet the students are still required to carry backpacks that weigh approximately forty pounds. And under A two, which is operational systems. Custodial supervision and methodology is not in accordance to the town charter, and little progress has been made to support changes requested by the committee. E one, there's a comment, and that is instructional practices.
B one is recruitment and hiring strategies?
Oh, I'm sorry. I looked back at the wrong section, thank you. Higher turnover administrative leadership, particularly at KCC, is highly concerning and will ultimately stifle the important checks and balances the district has put in place to identify needs of younger students before they become issued. There also seems to be a high level of paraprofessional turnover as well, as near, as early retirements. This concern blankets several items on this evaluation. And the next comment is for E one, fiscal system. Patty does a spectacular job in concert with her leadership team and business manager to develop a concise, well-researched, and adequate budget. She attends all financial work group meetings, is an active participant in CIP meetings and interactions with the financial committee. I commend her abilities to collaborate with the town financial, financial contacts, and ability to advocate for the needs of the students. I would like to see, this is another comment, I would like to see continued growth towards budgeting, uh, to a plan. As we continue to lose our financial flexibility, all items on the budget will require a thorough and full discussion and justification. We can no longer pick how much we want to find in the budget, it should already be known quantity, it should already be a known quantity, and we, and we plan to it. And there's a comment under the entire section. Patty oversaw the review of the MPS policy this year in collaboration with MASC, Jim Hardy, and enabled improved access to these policies by improving a web, a web lookup that represents a dramatic improvement over what was in existence before. Commitment to those meetings was exemplary. She read through every policy and we discussed every recommendation. She also kept the process organized and assured it was on time, it was, it's on-time completion. In addition, the budget process keeps getting better and better during my tenure on the committee. She has successfully worked with our business manager to develop a strong starting point for budget discussions, enabled the work of the finance working group, for plan of the year budget, excuse me. Navigated the town mandated process and improved regulations with the town manager, and oversaw gain made in the CIP process. She has come up with a creative way to budget for the, pioneering of new ideas and approaches this, also looking out for the future to anticipate new challenges. And, any discussion or comments on, uh, on the second one? No? Alright. We'll move on to the third standard then. And the third standard is family and community, community engagement. Something tells me this should be a good one. Alright, so A one, the first item under that one is, uh, family engagement, and we have, uh, should be a three point seven five on that, and higher under proficient. Community and business engagement. Uh, which would be a three point seven five, or three point eight. Student support is a three. Family collaboration is a three point two five. Two-way communication is a three point eight. Cultural proficient communication is a three point seven five. Family concerns is a four, exemplary. And we have for an overall family communication and family and community engagement rating of a three point five. So there is a couple of comments under that one, um, all under the entire section. Patty seems to be everywhere, as I learn more about what our district, district both within MASC and across the country are doing to engage their communities, I realize that we have, I realize what we have going in Mashpee is some, is some of the best. Collaborations with Southport Falcons, Falcon families, Mashpee Commons, with we are Mash, hashtag we are Mashpee, and the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe are real standouts for me. The addition of the annual family opinion survey and the commitment to multiple response methods demonstrate that this superintendent wants, in caps, to hear from people, wants to engage, and personally does so. She is also modeling that engagement for teachers and staff who seem to be more visible on social media and in the community this year. Also, the leadership team set up between MPS and MWT have tackled dozens of activities in the NWT culture, professional development that was started last year and expanded in the current school year as a model for districts across the country. I see this as a, as implicitly building a bridge between MPS and MWT families, demonstrating the district's commitment to do better by our Wampanoag students. And one more comment, Patty does an amazing job at outreach and continues to find new and innovative ways to engage our many stakeholders. Alright, that's the end of section three, that's standard three, does anybody have any comments? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading, so, thank you. Apologize. The superintendent has done an exemplary job in promoting the Mashpee public schools. Communication relationship with the town has continued to improve as evident by the, uh, multiple CIP items that were supported by the town and ultimately approved at town meeting. I don't think there is a social organization or neighborhood that the superintendent is not involved in some manner. The superintendent will need to continue to work on addressing the diverse social and emotional needs of our students and their families, and ensure that all staff practice and instructional strategies to support these needs that have been provided to them.
This is the most I've heard Chris talk.
Can you tell I'm getting my throat scared?
He's like, ten minutes past his-
She needs some water, Mr.-
He's getting all choked up over there.
But again, all of this will be combined in appropriate way in the final draft, which will be made public and also obviously made available to the superintendent board. Alright, so we'll move on to standard four, which is professional culture. And under professional culture, we have commitment to high standards. And on that one, we have a three point five. Mission and core values. We have a three, proficient. Meetings. Under meetings, we have a three point two five. Policies and practice, practices is a three, proficient. Communication skills is a three point five. Continuous learning. Uh, I'm sorry, continuous learner of staff is a three, proficient. Continuous learning of administrator is a three point two five. Shared vision development is a three point five. Response to disagreement, we have a three, proficient. Conflict resolution is also a three, proficient. And lastly, under this section is consensus building, which is also a three for proficient. Giving an overall rating for standard four, professional culture, a three, proficient. And there are a couple of comments under this section as well. Under shared vision development, I would again emphasize Patty's leadership on the portrait of a graduate session. It took a lot of planning and time, and the results will provide a solid foundation for the next strategic planning process. Patty's high standards and emphasis on continuous, continuous learning are obvious to anyone who's spent any time with her. She's curious, self-aware, and encourages her staff to be the same through her example. She shares current research and seeks out high, highly relevant, relatable, and insightful professional development for MPS. Recently, someone inquired about whether our elementary teachers were trained in trauma-specific techniques. And when I inquired, I learned that our entire district received the PD back in March. We seem to be ahead of the curve on setting new measures for success for our graduates, addressing social, emotional, well-being, and innovating in our classrooms. This is all a testament to the positive influence Patty has on MPS culture. So the comment says proficient, a couple of bumps in the road, but overall, well done. Strongest asset is interaction with the community and the visibility that provides. Would like to see more of a as, a result of, uh, you know, it seems like this person did not finish their comment. But it says a result of doing X rather than Y, and then it kind of trails off, but I will reach out to them and-
Is that all of your shared vision?
Uh, there's all the shared vision that I had, well-
No, but that was all under shared vision, that you just all that stuff?
Yes, under the last section.
Got it, thank you.
So that's the end of, uh, well, that was under professional culture, that was-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was the last standard.
Overall comments.
Oh, got it, got it, got it, okay, got it, got it.
Did you make comments in some individual?
No, 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 I just was trying to follow the comments with the section, and I was in the wrong section, so I got it out.
Only the first two sections had individual comments, after that, they were all, yes, I believe. But I wanna check this document real quick before I, there was a comment. Superintendent is committed to having high standards of teaching and learning in our schools. She treated students, faculty, administrators, students, and, and parents with the utmost dignity and respect. The superintendent has a good relationship with the various unions and has been able to make, able to most, has been able to most concerns in an amicable manner. I like the fact that she is leading a group to develop Mashpee's own portrait of a graduate and look forward to seeing it. Alright, any questions or comments? Alright, anything on the, uh, standard four? That was an overall three, for proficient.
What was the number for consensus building, I missed it. I missed it.
Uh, what number was that?
That's the very last one, F3.
Consensus building was, it was three, proficient. Alright, and that leads us, uh, to the overall evaluation rating for, uh, the superintendent was a, uh, three for proficient. And we did, uh, unfortunately, this didn't text wrap on here, this, this is gonna be fun reading this one. So we have a couple of comments, uh, for the entire, uh, evaluation. I continue to be amazed at the strides this district makes each year. I ensure that I gave as much time as I could to the evaluation process to provide as much detail and recommendation as I could. We are at a point now where we need to discuss the small issues and not selecting proficient because it's easy. It is the macro level reviews, out-of-norm discussion, and shifting paradigms that will allow us to move over the hump from good to great. I take responsibility to be part of the solution for each of the comments made and to provide recommendations where I may go. And one more comment? The superintendent has consistently promoted the Mashpee Public Schools, and it has been a good year for her and the schools. The superintendent has continuously worked in a very collaborative manner to help the administrative team, faculty, and staff improve their ability to help students be continuous learners and grow socially and emotionally from childhood to young adults. Overall community engagement between the, the school and civic organizations and residents of Mashpee has increased from last year. The installation of new electronic sign by MMS, MHS, that the superintendent promoted and saw through the completion, which is beautiful, by the way, reflected an improved way to provide information about activities, and the great things going in our schools to a wider audience than ever before. I'm glad that we have Mrs. DeBoer as our superintendent and look forward to our continued success leading the Mashpee schools. And that will wrap up the superintendent.
Flip that over. Apparently you don't have one.
Does not wrap it up, I need one more. A consistent theme for me in reviewing Patty's performance this year is her deliberate and informed effort to look ahead. To set a course for the district that exemplifies the growth mindset we try to instill in our students. Even while exer, 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 manag, managing this diverse and dynamic district that is confronted with unique challenges, Patty maintains an optimist, optimism and continued presence that is both reassuring and consistently evolving. I love that we have a superintendent who has a willingness to learn and innovate and who empowers teachers and staff to do the same. She's set a compelling trajectory for strategic planning, engagement, and the district's families, and the broader community, and, and especially the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, out of year budgeting, and the continuous improvement of classroom instruction and student support. I believe that is it, and I learned something about myself, I'm probably gonna need glasses very soon.
Been there.
It does happen.
Alright, so, uh, does anybody, do you have anything that you'd like to say about the?
I appreciate, I mean, I look forward to actually reading it, of course. But I appreciate everybody's feedback and, 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 go forward with everything you have, and, 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 suggestions that are in there, I'll be definitely, incorporated into practice, and, 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 thank you for, thank you.
Anybody else?
I think you've covered all my comments.
I, uh, definitely, definitely, definitely want to have a follow-on discussion about Teach Point. And if anybody is going to self-nominate for cheer, um, you might want to have a conversation with me about all that one before you do that.
I was gonna say, and you can have that same conversation with me. And you'll get the same, uh, love and care. It is a challenge. It doesn't, uh, unfortunately for, I, I think, committee members, because we don't touch that system very often, matter of fact, typically once a year. You know, it's like remembering how to, um, ride a, try to ride a tricycle, um, each time, and so, um, with varying degrees of, of success. I think Suzie's, uh, little video immensely helpful.
Yeah.
I think in hindsight now, um, we need to have her also do a little video on, once you're done, how to make sure that it gets to the right place, um, 'cause I know we've had that happen, um, in prior years. I think we've had that happen again this year where it didn't get to the, the chair as, um, as expeditiously as possible, and I, I just think that's, we're not as knowledgeable, um, in using that application, and so I think we need a little more, um, assistance.
I think you could set up something almost like, you have the rubric that you're looking at outside Teach Point, and if it's a Google form, but at least when each, each of you does theirs, then it ends up with an Excel spreadsheet, or at least it can already do all the averaging and be able to just pull it into the one document.
Yeah.
Where all the comments, or something.
Yeah, I just really, really recommend sitting with Suzie and coming up with whatever system you want, and she will do it for you. She will make it happen, she really is like a...
We'll do that, we'll keep that in mind.
We can do a formative on Teach Point as well, so.
Yeah, everything is, but you don't, if you wanted to do it another way, and then have, let's put it, like, I don't even, really do whatever you need to support, so that the content is what you're focused on and not the process.
I think we definitely have to discussion, it might be a good place for the effective and efficiency one group. So they will start there.
It's effective right there.
For, for the record, I, I didn't have any issues with it. No, what I mean, it...
I was actually not gonna say that, but the call beat me to it.
I don't want you to...
I think, I mean, individually, I don't think your form should be a challenge.
It's not.
But then, you're taking five of them.
Yeah, that's awful.
And that's what you say, I don't think that clerically necessarily needs to be on you.
Yeah, we have... Other ways to do that.
Yeah, 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 well, well, for the next chair or, you know, whatever happens, we'll discuss that, but, start at that, please, but, alright. So we're all set with the superintendent's evaluation, and thank you, and thank everybody, uh, for doing that. And, uh, next we have executive session, strategy for negotiating with non-union personnel for which we will not return.
Mister Chair, uh, before you say that, so before you got here, we had a discussion that, uh, Don brought up, that...
Okay.
If we do end up voting on something at this executive session, because none of us know if we are.
Yep.
That we probably should come back into open meeting to close that and our previous executive session, let's say you. Because we potentially could have five, at least one different member on our next meeting.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I didn't know if we were gonna be voting on anything, but...
I don't know either, yeah, so.
We didn't know if we should say, make a motion that we'll, we'll reconvene if necessary.
I thought, I thought we established that we did have to vote on something.
Is, is there a potential to vote on something?
For, in tonight's executive session?
There's three things for tonight.
Oh, yeah.
And then you've already approved the other list, which I have consolidated as sort of, so it would be presented here.
We can do that, we can just, we could come back to public, and if we don't end up voting, we'll just come back and close?
Yeah, that'd be the easiest way.
Okay.
No problem, yep, so if we have a motion to, uh, go to the session.
During into executive session, and we will reconvene into open session.
Yeah, for, for, for the purposes...
For the purposes of...
Negotiation with non-union personnel.
Negotiation with non-union personnel. Although the clerk is not, Mister Schmidt.
Alright, so we have a motion by Jeff, second by Don.
Yes.
Any discussion? Alright, Don?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and yes. Alright. Um, yeah.
You might have to hang.
Is it gonna?
Yeah.
It's gonna be long? It doesn't have to be.
Okay, then nevermind.
No, it doesn't, it just has to be recorded.
The reporter will pick up. I said the reporter.
And I defer to, I defer to the chair about that.
I took him at the last one.
Okay, you don't, you may stay.
Okay, we're... So, sorry. It's one of those appointments Fridays for the Peds.
It'll be all recorded, we'll have many, and all that, I don't think.
Are we going back? No, you don't have to physically come back, can't you open the meeting there?
Yeah.
Well, it's posted that the open meeting is here, right?
What are you all saying?
Alright, we'll come back.
If somebody does happen to be...
If somebody does happen to be running down here right now, they're gonna want to, like, move in with the executive session.